We'll start, call it, call to order. Start the meeting through road call.
Bob Gilgit, member.
Terry Wade, member.
Ray Kachasky, member.
Cindy Picos, member. Nancy Knight, member. Wendy Raff, give her alternate.
Harry, no, which alternate?
Bill Larson, ex-official.
One open spot, Kathy. I'm gonna seat Harry this time. Review of zoning language and to forward to public hearing. Why don't we start with the easy one? Get them out of the way. Let's start with the administrative one that just read numbers. Actually, which one is that?
Motion two. What?
Mr. Chairman, are you looking for a motion to approve that?
Yes.
All right, I'll make a motion and move the complaining board to what's written here. Motion two.
I second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I always just want to start at the top. Let's see, this one is the, this is commercial. Oh yeah, this is the one down here.
Yeah.
That's pretty standard, discussion on that one.
I just, could you, could you tell me how this is in the interest of the morals of the town? I have no problem with the word, but I have no idea what it means.
I laughed. Came from town council.
No, no.
It doesn't have legalese.
If you don't want it in there, it's probably something.
No, no, I don't, I don't object to it, I just thought it was. I'll make a motion again to approve motion one as written.
Okay.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Okay. Passed, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed. This is easy. Let's see, the next, the motion three is to amend a special exception for raising of animals as an agriculture facility in all zoning districts. Okay, now this one I guess is from town council.
All, all of the, they are from town council. So I have no objections to the, to these motions, other than we keep using the word agricultural use. So my concern is, I'm gonna raise the question, is the boarding of equines considered an agricultural use? And is the raising and breeding of dogs considered an agricultural use? If not, then I think we need to talk about, it doesn't address the issue of the horses. If, if it's considered an agricultural use, then, then I'm fine with the three motions as, as written. But I, I'm not sure the boarding of equines would be considered to be an agricultural use. I also have.
Yes, that, if you look in RSA 2134A.
Yeah.
Boarding of equines is a stated use.
How about dogs?
Dogs, no. Dogs are handled under different RSAs and, and they are domestic animals. They have nothing to do with agricultural use.
How about the boarding and breeding though? Suppose somebody wanted to open a dog kennel. My only concern is if you wanna open a dog kennel, like say on a acre.
Right, understood.
It's not that, it's not that it's disallowed.
Right.
It's I would like to wanna make sure that what they're handling for, for waste is consistent with the GMPs. Or the good management pri, yeah, GMPs.
Yeah.
And I don't know if dogs would be covered.
Dogs are not covered under the, any of these agricultural statutes.
Okay.
Do not include dogs. Now, the kenneling of dogs, I, I don't know, I.
So if somebody wanted to open a kennel as a home business.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
I don't think.
Probably would be allowed?
How many, how many, how many neighbors would show up and.
Doesn't matter how many neighbors show up, if it's, if it's, if it's allowed, it's allowed.
But I thought I read somewhere that the, the select people have the right to say no. If it has anything to do with noise, odor, pollution management.
Bill, in, to your question, there is one.
Okay.
The kenneling of dogs for the dog sleds are covered. They are covered under RSA 21 because it says the use of dogs for herding, working, or guiding livestock. So sled dogs would not be a, would not, well, we're saying all other agricultural uses are allowed. So the kenneling of, of sled dogs would be allowed, but they would have to follow best management practices.
Yeah, the, the only other thing that I'm concerned about here is the use of the word raising. It doesn't cover boarding or keeping.
Well, I will check with town council and, and ask that question. Because raising is the word that's used in the RSAs. So I'll find out if that includes boarding or keeping. And I'll tell them we're gonna change the word to keeping because that's what you've talked about at the last meeting.
The other thing.
Rather than raising.
The other thing I had noticed before pertaining to dog kennels is we do have language that they're allowed in accessory uses by right in LDR. But there isn't a definition of dog kennels. I think when it was listed, it was probably like someone could have a run in the back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do we need to clarify a, a definition for dog kennels for how we have it here so people don't say, oh, let's go breed dogs and.
As I said, my concern is, is only about, not about dogs, it's about somebody starting a home business of breeding dogs.
Right.
And my concern is not even that they should be allowed to do so. I don't have an objection to the doing it, I just think they need to have, they've got to follow the waste management practices that are listed in the GMPs. And they're quite stringent even on dogs. So that's, that is my only concern. I mean, I know, if you wanna raise dogs, it's fine with me.
Thanks to your home.
As long as they follow the GMP practices.
What about the noise though?
Well, we do have a noise, a noise ordinance. But, but it leaves open all of this stuff when you use the word agricultural use, and I don't know how to close it. Anybody who gets an animal as a pet, you want a pet goat, is that an agricultural use of the land? But not by my definition, that's not an agricultural use of the land. So I think we just need to recognize that, that those, if that, if those situations came up, and they're very unlikely. I mean, then we stuck with them, I mean.
How are dogs differentiated from goats? There are both domesticated, right?
Pigs too.
I mean, does, is there a separate, you're saying dogs are handled separately?
Well, dog, there are specific state laws that relate to dogs.
Specifically dogs.
Specifically dogs. Because you have to register them and all of those other things. I don't know what other domestic animal requirements there are. Whether you have to register a pig or whether you can just have a pig. I don't know.
A big license.
Well. So I, I would have to, I would have. There is a definition of livestock, okay, which is different than a pet in the state law. And it does, it says it shall include but not be limited to beef, dairy cattle, steer, oxen, goats, sheep, swine, horses, mules, and other equatee, as well as domesticated strains of buffalo, bison, lime, llamas, alpacas, emus, ostriches, poultry, rabbits, yaks, elk, fallow deer, red deer, and reindeer. So those are livestock in the state of New Hampshire.
Can you keep a goat in your house?
Would you want?
I don't know.
Why don't you try it?
Well, you know, people love pot-bellied pigs.
Still?
Well, I, I would contend that in most of these cases where people are keeping animals as pets, I'm not so sure. What's the public interest here that we're trying to protect?
Right.
And, and I'm, I'm just kind of, if we allow a dog, why wouldn't we allow a goat? I'm okay with that. It, as I said, my only concern was when you get into running a business of breeding dogs and the rest. I just wanted to make sure that that was under the definition of agricultural use.
But wouldn't that depend on the zone that you live in to be able to do that? I mean, if you're not zoned for something like that, you could, I could set up a kennel at my house.
We allow home businesses.
Yeah, I mean, a kennel, I grew up.
As long as it's secondary to, we don't discriminate. I mean, you can have a home business as long as it's secondary to the fact that you live there.
But there's, there are certain restrictions to a home business though. I, I'm not sure of keeping dogs.
Yeah, my mom has bred four days since I was seven. But, you know, it's not like they had runs on acres. It was their little dogs, you know, a litter at a time. But technically, it's a kennel. So there's a wide variety of definitions, which is why I wondered if our definition, our, our use of kennel should be defined.
There was some kind of a statement up here that condo associations, their rules apply.
Yes.
Right. Well, yeah, and that's fine. And likewise up on Moose Run, I understand they have covenants that prevent this, and that's fine.
Yeah, overruns of state, yeah.
So, but village, commercial, high density, low density, you know, low density residential.
We wanna avoid having a solution for something that's not yet a problem too.
Right.
And if you think about the way the town has developed, there really is not an awful lot of opportunity for many of these agricultural businesses.
No.
True.
Except for something like a dog kennel, which if someone wanted to set up a business as, as a dog keeper, but there's a lot of dogs around the valley. People go on trips and stuff and they, it might not be that outrageous to have somebody think about doing that. But that again is limited to certain areas because you can't, you know, you can't set up a real estate office in a low density residential zone because of certain restrictions with regard to a home business. You can in a high density, but not in a low density.
I, I'm not, I have to go read it again, but my, you know, as long as it's kind of secondary to your living there and you provide provisions for the parking and the rest, and you're not transacting, you're not exchanging money in, in the office. I, I have an idea it is allowed, but, but I'd have to go read it again.
That was one of the reasons that the Moose Run community changed to low density residential because of the potential of small businesses there going.
Yeah.
You know, there's a difference between somebody sitting, opening up a service to sit dogs for people that go on vacation. Most of the time, I mean, you would, I, I would guess, assume that you're gonna have two or three dogs. People are gonna have, and they're gonna be, at night at least, they're gonna be inside a home or something. You start getting into these other animals and a lot of them are just outside in the backyard or the whatever. And, I mean, it's a little bit of, could be a little bit of a difference.
Yeah, it was, you know, I got, there is a document called the New Hampshire Agricultural GMPs. It's an actual physical document that he, I didn't realize he's referring to. Much of it deals with waste management practices. And where it really gets tough is, is the waste management practices when the ground is frozen, which is what happens here. For all intensive purposes, understand that what we're writing is going to prohibit horses 'cause no one is going to live up to these GMPs. You know, you gotta get clay line pits, you gotta calculate how much volume you've gotta allow for four months of storage on site. I mean, they're, they're pretty strict. Now, I'm not saying it's impossible, but, but it would be quite a burden. Now, I don't, I mean, that's what the GMPs are.
And that's applied to everyone in the state though, right?
Oh, well, they're GMPs. When we say that by special exception, they have to be considered, we're making them force of law. GMPs are not force of law, they're recommended guidelines. And then in theory, the ZBA could, I guess, ignore them, even though we say they should consider them. But.
What are you suggesting, Bill, that the dog kennel situation should be put in as a special exception situation?
I, I, no. What here's, personally what I'm suggesting is, is I think we should adopt these three and put some words on a list to consider in future years, do we need to tighten these down to include dog kennels? I mean, we're, we're never gonna get everything, you know? So that would be my, I just wanted people to realize that there could be loopholes in agricultural and.
The dog, the dog portion of RSA 21 is working dogs. But somebody taking someone else's dog in for a week or whatever would not be covered under the, the definition. The definition that you're using though would cover the sled dogs. That, that's a working dog and so they would have to follow the BMPs.
So it almost seems like no matter what you do, if you deal with agriculture and livestock, it's a separate issue then from dogs. So you would have to specifically deal with dogs perhaps on the same level.
Well, it's a, it's a separate issue for everything except working dogs, whatever is defined here in RSA 21. Yeah. Everything else is.
So you're not proposing any changes to motion three?
No, not at all, or three, four, or five. I'm not proposing any changes, I just think we ought to recognize that some lawyer would come in here and if they wanted to, and possibly make an issue matter, some minor points.
And I will check with town council before the public hearing because it's, it is a good question on whether a person, even though goats or swine are listed here, these talk about businesses and, and the raising of them, not the keeping of them as pets. We should have that answer as far as what can you do? I mean, I don't think you're gonna have a dairy cow in your living room as a pet.
No, no, but there have been people that have wanted to have chickens, raised chickens as pets. Now, you have, you gotta dispose of the eggs. But is that an agricultural business? I don't, I don't know. And frankly, do I have a real problem with that personally? You want chickens in your backyard?
Chicken waste is very order of.
It is.
It is, it is strong.
Right. Well, there is, there is a specification in here on poultry on the numbers of chickens that you can have. And the town of Northampton went into great detail on poultry because of exactly that issue. And the fact that if you want eggs, you're gonna have to have rooster around, right? No, you don't have to?
No, you want chicks, you need a rooster.
Well, roosters are specifically, roosters are specifically stated in there because of the noise that they make. And they, so they go into a lot of detail, I was noticing online, to, to be very clear on poultry. I mean, they limit it to like three chickens and one rooster. And if you have a rooster, you have to have so many acres of land and, you know, so they, Bill's right. You gotta think about how detailed you wanna get.
I mean, you gotta, you gotta.
Some towns are very detailed.
You gotta think about some nice afternoon and you're sitting on your deck and enjoying nature, however you wanna do that. And you're listening to somebody else's chickens or roosters, you know, next door.
It's the roosters, that's what we had.
The roosters are the issue.
You hit it at winter, oh, you just went, right?
Or the being downtown squirm.
Noise wise, the roosters are the issue.
I get firecrackers. Or the wedding celebration. Yeah, yeah. But that's a one-time event, kind of.
Yeah, I'd rather hear the rooster.
Really?
It's a good starting point, but.
Yeah, you'll just have to, yeah. At some point, consider it further.
Do you have a, you have a motion from, motion three?
Yeah, make a motion that we accept this language and move it forward as, as written.
Do we have a second?
Well, second.
With the, with the proviso that you're gonna be checking that we're raising and keeping, right?
Yes, yeah. Are you, and you're okay with me changing it to keeping if he says it's okay? Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, let me sort of.
That should state that motion.
Yes, state, please state it.
Let me say. Statutory constitution, it's got, it lists, it lists all the words in, in one case here. It's got breeding, boarding, raising, training, riding. We could put all the words in there.
Well, I'll, I'll find out. I, I think I understand what your intent is. It's not just raising it from a baby to an adult animal.
Raising, keeping, boarding.
Right.
What if we put in all three of them?
Well, I will ask, yes.
So amend the motion to, um, move this forward with the possibility of changing the wording from raising to keeping? Or as advised.
Well, we do as, as many, as many adjectives as possible.
When, when you, well, no, but agricultural use pursuant to RSA 21 covers all those words. Okay? It's a matter of whether the word raising, right? For the raising of animals as an agricultural use. Because an agricultural use includes the boarding of horses. That's in the statute, and all those words.
Okay.
Okay? So it's just a matter of whether it says keeping or raising, that one word. And then agricultural use takes care of everything else.
So really, raising or keeping is academic if all the words are in RSA?
Keeping isn't the RSA, RSA, raising is, but keeping isn't.
That's correct.
So if you put keeping.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask, whether or not we change it, or whether or not we should leave the word raising.
If you put raising, the way it's written here, it limits it to only raising.
That's, that's what I, that's what I'm asking him, yes. Yep.
Do you want to withdraw your motion and remake it?
Yeah, I'll, I'll draw that last motion.
I withdraw the second.
Make a motion that we move motion three forward. I guess, subject to town, town, town council approving the wording of whether we could substitute keeping for raising.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
The way that's worded, does that allow the exception of either way that it move forward at that point?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passed.
Motion four on the number of acres. The, the proposal of that is that there, that the lot be large enough to handle a number of animals. There are other towns that use different acreage. Some use three, some use four. You can substitute any number that you want in there. All town council asks is that there be some kind of discussion and decision by the board so that it's not, you know, so that you, you have discussed the actual number, so that it's not arbitrary in the sense that we just plopped a number down. I did for this meeting, but you guys should discuss the acreage and what you think is appropriate.
So the.
It should be part of the meeting.
So the best management practices does not give you a guide as to what acres you need?
No, it does not, in terms of density of animals per acre. All, all it talks to is cleaning up the waste.
Yeah, and, and preventing the waste from getting into the groundwater.
Right, right.
Do we have, no, do we, can we talk about what areas we have that would allow?
Sure.
Yeah, that's, that's critical.
So that we can get a nice.
Basically, five acres, in town, within the boundaries of the town, you're talking about the golf course? Is there anything other than the golf course that's more than five acres?
Yeah, the area by the parking lots in the center of town is more than five acres.
Which area, Mark?
The, uh.
Which area?
The, the old fifth fairway and behind Greenpeace.
Okay, so C one, commercial zones, C one has more than five acres left. The Brock's property down the road is well over five acres.
That's LDR.
And the property down in Waddlelance, down by Waddlelance.
The Brock's.
It's down, it's, it's along the river down by the bridge, the five mile, six mile bridge.
Oh, okay. What about, um, in, in back of Mad River?
In back of Mad River is about 10 acres, that rec land down there. The rec land, although there is part of that that's limited within 400 foot radius, that lot itself is more than five acres, that rec land below High Country.
Is there, is there any access to behind Mad River other than that path that goes through Mad River and Osceola?
No.
How about down by the bridge?
Down by the bridge?
Am I not in the right place?
Well, you, it's below Tyler Springs.
Right?
No, that's not five acres.
Okay.
But you should also, I mean, someone theoretically could purchase existing lots, five one acre lots and put together. Now, nobody's gonna spend, well, I wouldn't think anyone's gonna spend $5 million, but you never can tell. I mean, it's.
I think in this particular, when you're running the same situation with raising and keeping, which is something we ought to consider. And the other thing is that put five, putting five acres down is arbitrary because there's no farmer here and nobody knows how much it takes to keep horses.
Yes, when I put five here, that was arbitrary. You should either agree with that for a reason or say, no, we think it should be.
But we have no basis for thinking that.
Right.
Well, actually, the horses, they do give you some, they, in the GMPs, they, they differentiate between, are you intending to leave the manure on the ground? In which case they give you some guidance as to how many acres you need to get rid of a horse, which is really prohibitive. That's why they go to the next thing, which is you've gotta provide a storage area for the manure on site and then move it, you know? But almost any, on five acres, you could meet the storage requirement. I mean, you could build the thing to hold it.
And have an adequate buffer zone.
Oh, I would think so, yeah, right, yeah.
You've had some experience.
Yeah, and the thing is that you do need a, a place, and I'm sure this is in the practices as well, you need a place to exercise horses in all kinds of weather, whether it be covered space or some kind of corral space. They need to be taken out and ridden and walked.
Well, they were kinda wishy-washy on that.
But I mean.
But, yeah, they do mention that, yeah.
Does need to be addressed, and that takes, you know, a minimum of an acre or two.
Well, do they have to be exercised on that property? Because what they're talking about is.
Well, otherwise they may be going up and down on older path road.
You, you gotta, yeah, well, right, you gotta walk them on public roads, I mean.
But.
In the winter, in the summer, you can go, there's a lot, I think you're allowed to take them into the forest service, but not in the winter.
Yeah.
Is that a daily thing, Harry?
Well, it should be.
Exercising a horse or whatever, yeah?
Absolutely. So the question is, not the question, I, I guess, if, I. not the question, I I guess if uh I yeah, would the Waterville Company convert the skate park into a horse park?
Well, what about the new owners of the horse? I mean, who knows what they might do if that's not successful?
Placenta.
That's how much they need money for.
But that skate park is 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 parking area, I don't think they could convert it to something other than a skateboard park, cause that's a yearly
Well, remember, the nature of what we're doing here is basically saying, here are the restrictions where you can't do these things. But generally agricultural practices are allowed in all zones, all areas of the town. So you you get into a little bit of a catch twenty-two. So if the restriction doesn't apply by definition, then it's allowed. It you know, it's not like you have to read the other uses. This is a, you know, these uses are allowed.
Yeah.
I I I think that's a pretty low risk. I mean, I don't think it's a.
I can uh I I can see this at a public hearing at some point where somebody says very clearly, how did you come up with five acres?
Yeah.
Right.
And we're, you know, the the discussion works well around the table here, but there really, at this point, there's nothing more than, I don't know, I guess, five acres is probably needed. And that's pretty hard to
Well, I think five acres, I'd use it on the basis, it seems like a, if the intent of the state law is to allow agriculture to occur, and you can put some reasonable limits on it, it would seem to me that five acres is not, you know, that if you had a pro- piece of property bigger than that and you chose to farm it, you you know, and you had five acres, it just sounds about right that you ought to be allowed to try it. Well, I don't know how else to answer it.
I know you don't, yeah, I don't either. I mean, I have no better answer than that myself, but I just know, I know how this happens. We all agree on something.
Yeah. Yeah.
Somebody from the public sits there, hits us with a question, we say, I don't know, it just sounded good when we talked about it.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Well, that's not entirely true. I mean, we talked about it, we said that they need exercise, we want a buffer zone, I mean.
Yeah, but then the next question is, which one of you guys is an expert? I mean, how do you know how much it takes to exercise? And we we haven't any any expert input while making this decision.
That was.
Right. What if you don't want one horse as a pet? I mean, and I know someone who does.
Well, that that goes back to the pet question versus agricultural use. And I I we have to ask that question, cause we don't know the answer to that.
You do?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I I was just kinda looking online, so Maryland, um their horse council recommends one acre minimum lot size for if you have one horse. Yeah, there has to be some sort of.
Where was that? Nancy, what was that?
Uh Maryland Horse Council requires or.
How do you pick Maryland?
So at least that's something.
Yeah, it just came up first.
Well, the other thing.
Find a state that requires ten, no.
That that's just for one horse, if you want another horse at all.
You also have to couch it in terms of, you have the best management practices for the removal of the manure and the storage and all of that. So you have to have an area for that, which is with the barn. You're you're gonna have probably some kind of living area, right, human area, even parking. That's another set of dimensions that you have to think about. You the the zoning board is gonna be able to adjust setbacks under special exceptions. So an area for increasing setbacks, for building screening, all of those things are gonna be part of the calculation of the area that you need. So that one acre per horse might be an acre and a quarter or an acre and a half when you get to everything else that you are gonna have to do.
That's agreed, but I think Nancy's got a good idea here, and that's going to some sort of an association. Must be a horse breeding association in New Hampshire. I wouldn't take the Maryland one because the weather's different down there and and there are different things, but if you if we, shouldn't we go to some sort of a an organization or association that has that type of information and get their input on that? And that way, when you're sitting there and somebody asks the questions, well, this came from the horse breeding association of New Hampshire and.
We could, but if we were to pass this language today, we have nothing.
Is it time? Yeah, that's.
Well, is it? Yeah, okay, but is it, is this particular motion right here pursuant to allowing the horses to be used over at the conference center? I mean, is that what this whole thing is about at this particular point in time?
The horses at the conference center raised the issue. We found that we have an overall issue with the zoning ordinance, period. Because we don't address agricultural use at all in the zoning ordinance.
Yeah, but this is a case of if if it ain't broke, don't fix it, cause I mean, I understand what you're talking about.
But what's broke is that now agricultural use is allowed in any zone in with no restriction.
No.
With no restriction.
I understand that, but have you had a a a throng of people coming to your office saying, I wanna raise horses, or I wanna raise cows, or I wanna have sheep or something like that? I mean, it hasn't been an issue at this particular point.
We've had people, I think, asked about chickens, and we've had people ask about horses. Well, obviously, you have horses.
Yes.
And and the thing is, we've told them no, even the chickens, we've said no, because we weren't aware of what the issue, what we've done.
Illegal.
Right.
And there just seems to be an urgency here that I haven't seen uh uh maybe I, cause I'm not privy to all these.
Well, horses, you have a lot anyway, Jerry.
Well, because there was no urgency before because we thought that the action that was taken in nineteen seventy-nine was an affirmative action by the town to prohibit animals in the community. So we have been communicating to people that they couldn't have animals because of what the town meeting had voted in nineteen seventy-nine. We didn't realize that the action that town meeting took actually opened up the town to allow agricultural uses anywhere in the town without any restriction.
Without any restriction, so it's got a one, ten by ten lot allowed. Do you have to follow GMPs? No.
Without any, none. Yeah. Right.
Remember, GMPs are just guidelines.
And I and I think we gotta look at this as um this uh this is our best effort in uh having a starting point.
That's right.
You know, I mean, next year, we can, we're gonna revisit some of this stuff as other problems maybe come up and reevaluate, but we gotta start somewhere.
You know, I'll go back to again, five acres, let's take the horse example. Somebody's got five acres of land, it's not by a river. So let's say you can meet the GMPs, dispose of the waste. Am I objecting to four horses being boarded on five acres of land for the purposes of a recreational ride? No. I live with that.
It seems to me that motion three takes care of an awful lot of what you're concerned about.
Well, three and five, because five nails down exactly
Five. Exactly.
what the standards you gotta live up to.
Yeah.
And it limits the agricultural use to special exception. So it's not a use by right. They have to go to the Z B A.
And this handles the thing that Bill was just concerned about, because you can take that special exception and you can look at all these things that we're all discussing here and say that this could be a problem.
Right, the Z B A would is required then to the, they need to go through, and so before you can have horses, someone's gotta come and apply. And they've gotta say, okay, show me how you're in compliance with the appropriate best management practices.
I just think in order to avoid being arbitrary and and opening yourself to a legal challenge, that this five acres thing is, unless we've got more to back it up than just what I've seen right here today. Yes, and if you feel comfortable that we're covered by motions three and five with regard to the imminent situations, that this could be taken up next year.
Well, I if you're not comfortable with five acres, then I would ask that you might consider deferring to New Hampton that set it at four. Because we can call them and find out where they came up with four. And at least you have, at least you have.
Got it from some other.
We could say we did some research.
At least you have an existing municipal ordinance that has an acreage in it. You can call that municipality, you can find out where they came up with four. If you're not satisfied, move it forward to public hearing. If you're not, because remember, you can't change this language.
Right.
If you wanna put in the four, we'll we'll call New Hampton, find out what other communities have for a number. And we'll we'll talk about it at the public hearing, and then don't move it forward to town meeting vote.
Well, can I read something?
Yeah.
Uh this is Maine's guidelines for managing horses, and this is just one section that needs more study. Land to maintain a horse is not as significant as the care of animal it's used. The most important factors uh are exercise space and cleanliness and manure management. For example, less than an acre of land can be adequate if it is near a park or public riding facility. However, the same amount of land in a high-density urban area with no exercise facilities or manure removal system may not be adequate. So um and and it goes on and on and on. It's like, maybe one, may uh require as little as three quarters to one and a quarter acres per horse.
Yeah, I saw the same thing. And actually, in talking to people, I asked a vet friend, um what she felt about horses being in a small enclosure.
So four horses.
And she said that the acreage that they're on isn't as important as the amount of exercise they get. So if and I know there's an issue of the manure on the streets as well, but.
So does the acreage fit in with the best management practices?
Right, it 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 does talk in the GMPs or horses about exercise.
So you gotta, let's talk about raising animals, so if you gotta exercise your cow, how much room do you need?
Well, I think I think the five acres is, Terry, and I kinda tend to agree with you when you look at the horse issue. But the question becomes, if somebody wants to, let's say, have chickens or a goat as a pet, it'd be awfully nice to simply say, if you don't have five acres, no pets.
Boy, that, yeah.
Yeah, it's good, I know it's kind of arbitrary, but and and if we lose and if somebody says, well, you can't do that, that's my right to have a pet. Well, take us to court. They're not gonna take us to court.
They're not gonna, and I I don't think there's gonna be a big difference between five acres or four acres. I mean, at that point, I I don't think that's gonna be the issue.
Uh, you know. No, I I. Well, I don't I don't have, I think even if we got it as low as three acres or two acres,
Yes.
it's avoiding the nuisance of somebody who's got an existing house, high-density residential, a half-acre lot, he wants to put chickens in his backyard. And I think we would kinda say, I don't know if that's such a swift idea, right?
Yeah, I I I think Mark's suggestion may be, because of the apparent urgency in this situation, at least you could refer to a local town, the town's not too far away, New Hampton. Um and they hopefully have reasons for their four acres, you know. I hope they didn't uh just pick it up here either.
Pick a number like we were.
But at least there's some sort of reasoning behind the number. So I would suggest that we, at least if nothing else, change it to four, and then I guess I could probably live with that. I don't really have much problem with it.
Yeah, there's proven us, it's just like our one.
You know, town like New uh New Ham- New Hampton, I mean, they've they've got a lot of open space. We don't have that open space. We are, we got five hundred acres here.
Yeah, we don't have any.
That that's a big consideration.
And please make sure that that's in the minutes.
We're a miniature town, we ought to require a miniature animal.
Only miniature horses.
Right, you're only allowed that Shetland pony.
It's it's
That'll require space.
It's definitely a greater impact in this town, we're we're only five hundred acres as far as having these situations, as opposed to a town spread out and, you know.
That's what I mean. To meet five acres here.
Yeah, but we're gonna screw up Sandy's ability to have a donkey.
No, no, if if you if you go to the four acres, you're right, unless, see, again, it gets into this stuff that we're gonna, see, she's gonna argue agricultural use is a pet.
Yeah.
You're gonna have to be able, we've got this loophole sitting here, a pet's a pet. You can have a dog, why can't I have a donkey?
Can't we say household pets only?
Well, no, because I'm sure there are people who keeps their dogs outside.
Well, this is raising raising and keeping of animals for agricultural use.
There are a lot of people that allow dogs in the house.
But it's an accepted practice is having dogs inside a home, not a donkey.
Right? So I think when Sandy's, she's applying for that donkey.
Not agricultural use.
Cheryl already got her pigs, so she's.
Yeah, right.
She's clean. She's green project.
So you're suggesting, Ray, that the answer to the question from the public about that would be, well, we looked at New Hampton and it was four acres, but we have much less open area, therefore, we restricted it, great, more maybe five.
And all the other, and all the other reasons here are the setbacks, so, you know, we want, we want we want enough land so that you, we can have a buffer zone between, because we're such a compact town, we want a buffer zone around the the horses, so you need the the exercise and all the other things. I I don't, I'm not having a hard time with five acres.
Yeah.
Yeah, when you look at it that way, it's making sense.
That reasoning should be recorded so that it can be used.
It's in minutes to justify.
It's in the minutes, yeah, right.
So five acres is four acres plus buffer?
No, the five acres would include the buffer. I mean, it'd be big enough to have
Yeah.
of some some larger setbacks than thirty-five feet or something.
If Mark and council had come up with the number nine, would we be looking at nine acres now?
Yeah.
Right.
Sure. And I think that the it it one of what what Harry said and others said, to me, the issue is, are you in compliance with the good management practices? If you're keeping horses and you're in compliance with those standards, I'm okay with you're keeping horses now.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, I think it's hard to get four acre parcel here. So if if we said four and you could point to New Hampton,
Right.
What's that?
it's so hard to get four acres, it might be safer.
It's only a couple of spots that are four acres. Most of them are zoned rec.
And then we're sticking our necks out a little less.
Or special cities, right? Those are about the two that have got any sizable chunks of land.
And you still have to go to special exception, so it's still gonna get reviewed by Z B A in detail.
Right.
Right.
And it's gonna be a case-by-case basis, so.
Yeah, I'm just wondering about that land behind High Country, because that's right on the river and I'm I'm not sure with that shore.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I'm pretty sure for horses, it is out just on the basis of the GMPs. Because it very much does talk about uh managing uh animal waste when the ground is frozen. And how that's a real problem and you can't allow it to run off into the streams. So I I gotta believe that's gonna be an immense problem down there.
Yeah, I'm just.
How are you gonna keep it out of the river?
Yeah, I'm just wondering what the shoreline protection area is, is still, cause that's an additional restriction.
Well, it weakens some of those, so I don't know.
Isn't, isn't that area and the one behind Mad River in the flood plain? I don't know if that comes into play at all, but.
They are, the we, again, the Z B A can take all of that into consideration under the special exception, so I mean, that would, they would have to really build quite a facility there to protect water shed in a whole bunch of different ways.
And they would have to meet the restrictions of the shoreline to protect.
Everything, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, because it's not just the manure you've gotta worry about. I mean, urination permeates into the soil and when it's off, it's.
Yeah, it's part of it.
I mean, maybe storage for hundreds of bales of hay. I mean, one horse consumes a hundred bales of hay.
Yeah, and they're talking about, talking about clay line.
Yeah.
Yeah, come on.
Particularly up here, it's a very porous soil.
Yeah.
Where would then, after all this language is um determined, whatever the final outcome is, where then would horses be be kept?
Well, uh either they'd have to go back and talk to the um academy into letting them keep them on their property, or the golf course.
I don't know. We can't, I I I can't see a school allowing that and everything.
Well, the school is us.
Huh?
The school is us.
No, I mean, de academy, as private. I mean, that's that's school. I mean, you got kids and the potential disease and whatever, and
Well.
they're not gonna open that can of worms, that's liability, I would think.
Their problem.
No, I know.
And they won't do it.
I mean, no, it's it's, that's up to whoever wants to do it. They, I mean, they can, as long as they meet these guidelines, then they can.
So, but the upshot, did you wanna change five to four?
I like raise the idea myself. But but if if we have to be, if it's gonna be changed next year, then you can use the New Hampton thing and say, well.
North.
North Hampton.
Hmm?
Nerdworth, North Hampton.
Yeah, it's it's further away than just down ninety-three. It's in the southern part of the state.
Oh, North Hampton?
Yeah.
Well, I thought you said.
No, no, the North Hampton, by Hampton Beach.
No, no, North Hampton, by Hampton Beach. That's the big horse territory.
I was thinking, I was thinking New Hampton as well.
Yeah, there's a lot of horses down there.
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah.
Big horse.
But they have riding trails too there. They have riding trails there too.
The other place that has big horses here in the state of New Hampshire is over at Adattach. There's an equine center over there. It's down in the valley.
We'll call them.
That's a good example.
Why don't we?
We'll call them. There in, in Thornton, we'll call the, we'll go see the horse people.
Thornton with, um, pre-furn.
What do you do about this?
Heidi, I can't.
Heidi and Parker Yonah.
Yeah, yeah.
It's too late to do anything about that.
They have a beautiful place.
They have a beautiful facility.
Well, you pick a, pick a number.
They have about a hundred acres, eighty acres.
Easy, down by the river.
We'll live with the number for a year and we'll do more research and, and we'll, we'll go with it. We'll have something on the books to start the discussion. And there will be something in place that this may evolve. Like Bob said, we may, you know, we may go through this and there may be things that, but we're focused on the horses because that's the question that brought it up. But like Bill says, this is, this covers all of those livestock that I mentioned with the other question.
It would seem that horses might require more room than most of the others though.
Well, maybe.
Who knows?
But again, I gotta, I, we've gotta do, we've, we've got a starting point this way.
See, I, my thing with the horses is, I don't have a problem with the horses as long as they manage correctly.
Right, me too.
We're not trying to prevent somebody from opening up an equestrian ride here. We had one for years, for twenty years, they ran equestrian rides out of here. And there was never any problems. So I'm opposed to the idea, as long as they're taking steps to make sure the horses are treated correctly.
I, I hear what you're saying, but there's, I mean, there's, there's been more development. It's fine unless you're in the vicinity of where this may take place, and then you see how, you know, I mean, how that happens if.
Is that why that red house is empty? Because?
Put a bar in there.
I, I just, I think that, that, that's the other reason, Terry, why we would wanna move forward this year with something is the fact that even in the limited time I've been here, there's been a lot of additional development, a lot of additional areas that could have maybe fit, um, a place for horses to be boarded or whatever that have been developed. And the BBTS is a perfect example. And if they come in during the year with their next building, who knows? They may. Look at the way that the golf course and the open areas in the center of town have changed.
Well, I really don't have any problem with this, other than the fact that it's hard to justify it. And, but for the purposes of getting it on the book, so to speak, to remedy a current situation, if you wanna go with five, I don't really care whether it's five or four. It really doesn't make that much difference. I think that the idea that the horse thing is a special exception opens that door to allow those things that we, I, I think that's a great thing to have in town here.
Right.
And that leaves the selectmen the option to make sure it's not creating a problem, so just wanted to get some sort of justification of it, that's all.
Well, with that said, I'll make a motion that we move this amendment forward to the March meeting.
As written?
As written.
Are, are you gonna look into the raising, keeping as opposed to raising in this one as well?
Yeah.
Yes. Well, yeah, whatever language we agree on ought to be the same.
Well, it should be in the motion, I think.
Yeah, it, it should be.
Location. And look into the substituting the word keeping for raising.
Okay.
We have a second.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
What if we put down, I mean, just for future, what, in, in going forward, what if we put down minimum lot size? Like, and we set up a ratio, like one horse, one acre, or something like that?
Yeah, I thought of that, but you, somebody gets two horses and they keep two for a year, and then they get, they say, boy, I like this, I'm gonna get a third one.
And remember, we're trying to cover all of those uses in RSA twenty-one, so are you gonna define, is it two goats or three goats per acre?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Is it five chickens or two chickens and a rooster?
Well, we're gonna look into what. We're gonna look into what they do with Thorn and over at Adattach, right?
Yeah.
Well, so I think until we get that stuff, anything else is just speculation.
That is actually a big range there.
Yeah, what, what is our?
The answer is, is hopefully the Forest Service will give them permission to keep the horses on their property.
Yeah.
Can, can somebody explain to me why the Forest Service won't allow them to go into the forest in the winter?
Frozen ground, I don't know.
They have a permit that only covers the summer, right. And they haven't ruled on whether they would allow them in the winter.
Okay, thank you.
The Forest Service is in a really tough position, you know, because it's public land that they control. And there's so many different opinions on how to use it. They have to juggle it, you know. It's very difficult for them to make a decision because the input is so all over the place.
They get paid by a little deal.
That's why it takes years and years to revise it.
Well, I think that's the answer. They, they generally just drag their feet for five years.
By then.
Hopefully, there's a question.
It goes away.
They have in the forest plans, in this, during its zones, I don't know what it is.
Right. Well, they may get it now because, I mean, they, they just passed an amendment to the zone. They're now supposed to allow more activity, so maybe this would be.
Yes.
I heard some rumor about that.
I ain't ruling.
They passed it.
They passed it. Yeah, Congress passed them.
They passed it, so.
Yeah.
Now, what does this mean to the Curious George Gardens over there? Because that's certainly agricultural use.
Because we say every other agricultural use is allowed, then it's fine.
Yeah, okay.
You can't, remember that tilling the soil is one of those things that we can't stop, period.
You shouldn't keep a monkey?
Regulate, period.
Huh?
Can you keep a monkey?
Well, and see now, that's an inter, suppose they wanted a monkey?
It could be a working monkey, something handicapped, you know.
Don't. If they're raising monkeys, it's a problem, I think, but if they're just keeping a monkey, it's a bad.
What if the monkey doesn't have a mouth?
No. I mean, look at the Cur, real Curious George, I mean, the monkey lives in an apartment building, so I'm talking downstairs.
Well, this is, this is a new designation, like a Canadian dog, right?
No.
Bush gardens.
What?
Okay, what if I wanna ride horses for, all right, can we go on to number five?
Moving on to motion five?
Yeah, motion five.
This is motion five, because we're having too much fun.
Yeah, I've got nothing better to do.
So this is the, the listing of all the special exceptions.
Um, and these are the ones that are in addition to the four general requirements, which it can't be objectionable to people.
Five, is it?
Right.
Right, or whatever.
Yeah.
No, no, we have four. He's talking about in our ordinance.
In our ordinance, it's already.
Is already, is already four.
I'll make a motion to, to, that we forward motion five, as written.
We have a second? Any discussion on this one?
Nope.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
Eric.
Erica, thank you.
Did you understand? I didn't have a chance to read it yet.
Oh.
I just ripped it through, a little dangle.
You got the email.
I did, I read it, but I couldn't remember it.
I know, that football game last night was really exciting, so you didn't have a chance to read it.
I was away.
Lasted a minute then.
No, mine.
It did.
Huh?
It went on forever.
Do we have anything else, please, before the board?
Do we, uh, what, what's our agenda going forward now?
We have a meeting next.
So this goes to public hearing on January twenty-ninth.
The twenty ninth.
Well, we have a whole bunch of issues, right?
No, just these five.
Well, we still have the sign thing. We still dangling around on signs, okay?
No, the signs, no, the signs have not resulted. No, we're done.
The open house thing? No.
No, that was.
No, we're done with signs.
We finished signs, except the real estate.
Did we finish signs? Or did we still have that one issue regarding changing two to four, the number of open house signs that we have moved to a public hearing?
Yeah.
We changed it.
We changed it. We did change it.
We changed it to four.
We changed it to four.
But it hadn't passed yet because it has to go to public.
It has to go to public hearing, yes, right.
Yeah, yeah. So signs, that was made signs.
But it's just that one item, right?
Just the one item, okay?
Yes, yeah, everything else had passed.
Yeah, when the rest are, aren't, don't even list them.
All right, so now we have six, we have six things. We have six things on the agenda.
Six things.
What, anything else? Last chance for two thousand fifteen. All right, all right, good.
I'm not gonna sit.
January twenty-ninth at EKH.
Uh, these are by vote, right, when they go? This is by ballot?
Uh, by ballot, yes, prior to the meeting.
Someone probably ought to think about writing a little wig-wag article as to why
Yes.
we are proposing some of these things.
I don't have much time.
Um, wig-wag articles need to be in by next Thursday.
But we're, but that's.
Or next Tuesday, so.
In order to, but yeah, but, but the town meeting is when?
Town meeting is in March, so you could do the February wig-wag.
March. Right.
If you're gonna be in the January wig-wag, it's gotta be.
No, we, February would be better. We wanna get as close to town meetings, but once they're adopted, I wouldn't put it in if they're not yet adopted.
Right, okay.
So that has to be in by the eighteenth, whatever that is.
Yeah, the eighteenth of February.
Yeah.
Otherwise, people are gonna have a lot of difficulty voting on this.
Yeah, we want it for the February first wig-wag. It needs, I think we're talking two different things here. If we want it in the February first wig-wag, it has to be January. If we want it in the March first, then it's gonna be February.
That's right, we want it in the March first.
I'm, I'm be willing to live to the March first, that's fine.
Because that'll come out right about the same time as the town report.
It's the town meeting, right.
The town report, yeah. Town meeting is March tenth, Tuesday, March tenth. Yes, it is. Public hearing, just so you can all mark your calendars, because I know you love to be there, February fourth at the Recreation Department, multi-purpose room, six P M.
All busy.
Are you not gonna be there, Terry? I'm gonna miss you.
What's that, the budget?
The budget.
Does that mean the school one will be the night before? Is that how it's scheduled?
I don't know when they scheduled theirs for, they're usually the night before, which would be the third. But I don't know if they pushed it to the tenth.
What time did you say?
Six P M at the multi-purpose room.
February fourth?
February fourth. And if everything goes well, we'll have the budget printed by the end of the week.
Okay, there's nothing else, so I have a motion to attend.
Uh, move to adjournments.
All in favor? Thank you.